This work session of the Board of Education for May 21st, 2019 is called to order. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for being here this evening. Tonight, the Board is honored to welcome our students. I'm gonna keep talking. Are we okay? Alright. Tonight, the Board is honored to welcome our students who have received the Seal of Bilinguality from the state of Oregon. We have... We will be posting a list of all of the students who have received the Seal of Bilinguality on the PPS website. And families will be receiving a copy of the complete list from PPS. And students will be receiving the Seal of Bilinguality certificate from the state in six to eight weeks, I think. High schools will be called up in alphabetical order to stand before the dais and be recognized. And I'd like to ask Director Konstant to say a few words.
Great, thank you. The state... Sorry. I'm sorry. How we doing? The State's Seal of Bilinguality is established to recognize high school graduates who have attained a high level of proficiency in reading, writing, listening, and speaking in one or more world language in addition to English. This award not only acknowledges that two or more languages is important, but it also honors the skills our students attain in their pursuit of bilinguality and affirms the assets that many of our students come to us with. This is an incredible distinction, and it is our privilege to extend it to all of you.
Buenas tardes. As I mentioned a few minutes ago, we're very appreciative to have all of our students being recognized who are able to be with us this evening. Thank you for bringing friends and family here to be recognized for something that not all students attain, and that's a seal of bilinguality to appear on your diploma. So not only are you being recognized for meeting graduation requirements, but you've done so, you've proved your mastery of two languages. And for that, in this modern world, that multilingualism, we commend you for that effort. So felicidades. I know not everybody earned it in Spanish, but I don't know any other languages other than sprechen Deutsch kann. So, thank you for being here this evening. So, we're gonna recognize our students, and we have Marisol, who's gonna come tell us a little bit more.
Buenas noches. Good evening. My name is Marisol Kreutzer, Secondary Dual Language Immersion Tosa. I'm speaking on behalf of Michael Bacon, Director of the Department of Dual Language, who is unable to be here tonight. I'm honored to inform you of a major accomplishment of 148 Portland Public Schools graduates who are being awarded the Oregon Seal of Bilinguality. These seniors dedicated themselves to attaining a high level of proficiency in two or more languages. An achievement that only 15% to 20% of Americans reach as compared to 56% of Europeans. Some of the primary goals of the Oregon Seal of Bilinguality includes: encourage students to study languages; prepare students to be college-ready; recognize and promote world language instruction in public schools; provide post-secondary institutions with a method to give academic credit to applicants with bilinguality certifications; improve inter-group relationships; affirm the value of diversity; and honor the multiple cultures and languages of a community. Before I introduce our representative students, I would like to share a few highlights for this year's recipients. This is the second-largest number of recipients since the inception of this award. A total of 148, to be exact. Nearly half of our awardees studied school in Portland Public Schools with little to no English proficiency. Almost 10% are current emerging bilinguals. There are 73 students who will receive an honorable mention award for their outstanding partner languages score in national tests. IB, AP, STEM, SLIP. These students demonstrated proficiency across nine different languages in addition to English: Amharic, Chinese, French, German, Japanese, Maimai, Somali, Spanish, and Vietnamese. All of our nine comprehensive high schools have awardees, and this year, students from Alliance High School also earned the award. We expect another 100 to 150 students to earn this award post-graduation when their AP or IB language test results come out in July. I want to take a moment to thank those who played a major role in supporting our students to reach this accomplishment. Parents. Family members. Teachers. Counselors. Administrators. And community members. Their support is critical. The System Planning and Performance Department, along with the Learning Credit Options Program, among other contributions, they help us identify these students and their staff at their respective high schools, and ensured these students are recognized at graduation. NAMI One, Project Manager of OTL, and Elisa Kublitz, Administrative Assistant, worked across departments to compile lists of qualified students, cross-check data, and accurately report the information to the Oregon Department of Education. So, without further ado, please allow me to introduce our two representative speakers. They will share their remarks in two languages to address why being bilingual is important to them. A graduate from Roosevelt High School and the Spanish Immersion Program, the one and only Angela Gonzalez.
Hello. Oh, this is cool. Buenas tardes. Antes, me daba vergüenza hablar en español. No sé si a lo mejor tenía miedo a equivocarme o era porque me sentía desconectada esa parte de mi identidad. Crecí en un ambiente donde nunca se pausaba la música o charlas en español. De todos modos, no quise hablar. Me costaba mucho participar en mis clases de español. A veces me ponía a hablar con mis amigos en el idioma, pero mi rutina consistía en escuchar al español y responder en inglés. Era como si estuviera intentando rechazar esa parte de mi persona, mi cultura y familia. Pero cuando llegué al punto de tomar clases avanzadas, establecí una relación con mi maestra, la señora Velasco, y poco a poco crecí a ser muy apasionada por seguir mis estudios en español. Al ponerme a leer cuentos y historias, escribir poemas y ensayos, hacer análisis y poner, poder tener conversaciones fluidas, miré lo capaz que era y soy igual como todos aquí de tener éxito en manejando más que un solo idioma. Ahora no soy tímida para hablar. Me siento más conectada a mi lenguaje e identidad como una chicana. Ser bilingue también significa poder hablarle a mi familia. Hay ciertas cosas que no se pueden traducir o no suenan bien, no importa lo tanto que uno trate. Mi mamá me puede decir que me ponga las pilas, y yo la entiendo. Puedo hablarle a mis abuelos por el teléfono, escribirles cartas, y crear una conversación donde ambos nos podemos sentir cómodos. Hay un sentimiento de orgullo cuando puedo hacer que alguien se sienta cómodo con el hecho de hablar en español. He tenido momentos en el trabajo donde se nota que hay personas que les cuesta trabajo hablar, pero cambian cuando se enteran que comparto su idioma. Estar cómodo cambia las experiencias de uno completamente. Ya hacía en el hospital cuando veo el cambio de comportamiento en mi madre y al saber que su doctora habla español, o cuando salgo a la tienda con mi familia y uno de los trabajadores están dispuestos a hablarnos en español. Mis padres también son bilingues. Ellos conocen el inglés y continúan aprendiendo igual como yo sigo aprendiendo el español. Pero como mencioné antes, ellos comparten la comodidad del español. Para yo y mi familia, el español es una parte grande de quienes somos. Ser bilingue permite que tengamos el lujo de tener opciones. Podemos leer, escribir, hablar en más que un idioma, y escoger en cuál lo vamos a hacer, como todos aquí. He decidido incorporar el español en mi presente y futuro. Y para todos aquí les deseo lo mejor incorporando su lenguaje en sus vidas, no importando de qué forma lo deciden hacer. Gracias.
Okay, so basically, a little overview of what I was talking about is how I was always hesitant to speak Spanish despite having grown up with Spanish in my household. And I wasn't sure if I was disconnected with my Hispanic identity, but I felt pressure to know Spanish perfectly, and that's why I was scared to mess up. And when I got to the point in my high school career where I was taking advanced Spanish classes, I had a strong connection with my AP Spanish teacher, and that allowed me to feel connected to my identity, and I became very passionate for the language. And it also means being able to communicate with my family. There's certain things that just don't translate right, no matter how hard you try. And I can talk to my grandparents, I can write them cards. And I speak of how it's very... It's a privilege to be able to choose which language I want to read in, which language I want to speak in, which language I want to speak in... Or, I said that. Thinking. And that, for me and my family, it's a big part of who we are. And that the language can make someone feel comfortable, and, for lack of a better word, it's satisfying. It's rewarding to know that you can make that difference in someone's lives. I've had experiences at work where someone may not feel super comfortable speaking in English, and their whole way of being changes once they know that you speak Spanish, and you can share that with them. And then, I wish everyone here, with whatever language they speak, and I wish them the best with their future endeavors incorporating that language into their life. Thank you.
I would like to invite now a graduate of Grant High School and the Japanese Immersion Program, Kenji Lamden.
Gomnawa. Boku wa osanai koro, bilingal to yu imi ga rii kaiteki masen deshita. Mama kara tsene ni nihon go no hon wo yomu yoroni yore. Doyoubi niwa nihon jin gakou ni kayoi imashita. Ie de wa kibun teki ni nihon go de kae wo shi. Shougaku se ni na tara JMPi to yu hanbu nihon go no gakou ni kayou yonari imashita. Kono subete wa boku ji shin ga ketsan shita mono de wa na ku. Lioshin ga kime ta mono de. Boku no kodomo jidai wa nihon no wuka de mitasarete imashita. Kono yonni umareta toki kara, takoku go wo mana bu koto to yu koto ga subete no hito ni aatae ra rete iru wakke de wa na i to yu koto ni yomon sura idaki masen deshita. Shikashi, omoi kaishte miruto, kono yonni soudate ra rete yokatta to jishin wo motto iemimasu. Futsu no genhou wa sunnari to tsukeru yonatta koto ga arigataku moeru yonari imashita. Eiho i ga yo no genhou ga hanaseru koto ni yori, boku wa jibun i ga yo no wuka ni kanshin wo mutu yonari imashita. Takoku go wo shiyo suru koto ni yote, iriroiro na kanten kara munda wo toraire no nuri ga tuki. Chigau wuka wo momatta hito bito niwa, haikei ya den tou ni yoru iken no chigai ga aru no da to yu koto wo hiroi shiya de miru koto deki yonari imashita to oimimasu. Mata, koreka mo zutto, jibun no tame ni naru beku kano se wo aatae ra reta koto ni mo kizukimashita. Nihon to kakawari no aru shiwo to suru koto mo dekimasu shi. Nihon ni sumu koto ni mo amari shogai wo kanjimasen. Mai nichi nihon go JP de mana bu hihi mo mou wari ni chikazuite imasu. Kyou kou shite boku wa koko ni iru koto deki yonara, saigo no san nenkan, boku wo chikaruzi oki hoppatte kiete kureta Grant High School no nihon go no koushi, Paige sensei no okage desu. Hōkō wo dete, koreka no nishin se, donna michi ni susumo otomo, tichikatta genhou nouri wo itsū taka me itaki tai to ommo temasu. Nazu nara, nihon no wuka wa boku wa totemo taisetsu ni shite iru identity no okina bumen de aru kara desu. And this next part will be in English.
I never truly understood what it meant to be bilingual as a small child. My mother always pushed me to read Japanese books and had me attend a Japanese school on Saturdays. I conversed mainly in Japanese at home. I was put into the Japanese immersion program, where half a school was in Japanese. Most of this was out of my control. My parents made my decisions at that young age, and I was thus immersed in Japanese culture throughout my childhood. I never stopped to think that not everybody had this privilege of learning multiple languages from birth. Looking back, I could say with confidence that I am glad my adolescence was shaped this way. I began to appreciate the ease at which bilinguality came to me. Being able to speak more than one language has made me understand and appreciate cultures that aren't my own. I believe my bilinguality has given me the capability of looking at issues from multiple perspectives, and a broader understanding that people from different cultures hold different ideas due to their background and heritage. I also realized that I was given the potential for my future that will benefit me for years to come. I have the option to pursue a career related to Japan or even live there without much trouble. As I'm coming to the end of being a student of the Japanese immersion program, my time of learning Japanese every day in school is almost over. I wouldn't be who I am today without the strong guidance of my Japanese teacher at Grant High School, Mrs. Page, who led me through the last three years. No matter what I choose to do for the rest of my life after high school, I will continue to work on my language skills as Japanese culture is a large part of my identity that holds great importance within me. Thank you.
Finally, I would like to ask our attendees, Oregon Seal of Bilinguality awardees, to stand so the superintendent and school board can recognize you.
All our graduates?
Okay, so we'd like to take some pictures of students with the Board and the Superintendent. Could the graduates from Alliance come forward, please? Are there students here from Benson? Could the students from Cleveland come forward? Franklin? How about Grant students? Jefferson? Lincoln? Madison? Roosevelt? Ann Wilson? Congratulations again to everybody. This is a huge accomplishment. And PPS is proud of you, the Board, the Superintendent, all of your teachers, your families, your communities. We're all so proud of you. And your ability to speak in multiple languages is gonna serve you well for the rest of your life. It's a huge accomplishment. Congratulations. Okay, so we are gonna move on with the rest of the meeting. You are all, of course, welcome to stay. I'm thinking you might wanna go elsewhere and continue the celebration.
Go graduate.
Grab a cookie on your way out.
So, we're gonna take a very short break of a couple of minutes to allow people to head out. Okay. We're gonna reconvene. And the next... The next item on the agenda is introduction of the 2019-20 Student Representative to the Board. So, I'd like to ask the current student representative, Nick Paisler, to introduce his successor.
Yes. Well, thank you, Rita. Good evening, Board, Superintendent, and our PPS students and families. I have a special announcement for you tonight, like Rita just introduced. The time has come for us in this year to introduce the student representative-elect to the Board of Education for the 2019-20 school year. This year-long position, as I've come to learn, comes with great knowledge and pride for our district here at PPS. I'd like to introduce Maxine Lateral, a soon-to-be senior at Franklin High School in southeast Portland. I've known Maxine for about two years now, and throughout that time, she's been a fabulous member of the district's student council and a huge support to me this year. I'd like to say that the DSC has spoken and has elected Maxine for her knowledge of Portland Public Schools and her devoted commitment to including and increasing student voice in PPS. And if you'd like to come up and say a quick word.
Congratulations, Maxine.
Using the mic, so we'll say something. I'm just really excited that I get to have this opportunity to sit on the Board and, you know, continue to increase bringing student voice here. I've been very over-involved at my high school. I've been in our ASB for three years. And this year, I was on our newspaper, so I'm, you know, being involved in different ways. I really do enjoy leadership and working with adults who, you know, all of you, I can learn so much from, and especially the incoming Board members too. So, I'm really excited to continue to learn from all of the district staff and, you know, mingle and talk maybe about other-than-work stuff. Get to know you all, maybe. But I'm just really excited for this opportunity to continue to bring voice and, you know, go out and talk with all of these students and hear what they have to say. Yeah, okay. That's all I have to say.
I love it.
Welcome. So, thank you for doing... Congratulations on being elected. Thank you for doing this. Thank you for all your work to date.
Oh, yeah.
And keep in mind that, you know, you might be able to learn a few things from us, but we're hoping to learn a bunch of things from you, so...
Well, there's a lot coming.
Good. So, you'll be using the mic a lot. Okay.
I know this isn't... Nick, this is not your last meeting, right?
Sorry, what?
This is not your last meeting, correct?
He's staying until we approve the student representative policy change.
I'm gonna graduate, and then I'll meander back.
We can have weeks to plan all of our commendations of you, but I just wanna say that you have done an amazing job of really beefing up the DSC and creating a much more robust process for bringing forward the candidates for the student representative. And the engagement, Maxine, of you and all of your peers this year has been so much stronger than what I have seen in the past. And Nick, that's due a lot to your efforts. So, we look forward to another opportunity to celebrate you and thank you for everything you've done. But thanks for creating this opportunity for Maxine as well.
Yeah. Thank you. No, it's been an amazing year, and I've already been, like, for that last meeting in June, I've already been thinking like, oh my gosh, what am I gonna write for my year-end speech? I'm just gonna start... It's gonna be... It's gonna be a lot. I've done so much. No, I mean, I've been able to meet amazing people at the district, and I've learned so much just in this one year. And just, I mean, about education, about just how many different types of students there are out there, and honestly, what our world is made up of, too. So, it's been an amazing experience, and I'm ready to... I'm excited and ready to hand it off to Maxine for next year as well. So, I'm super excited. Go, Maxine.
By the way, I've got a bunch of amendments to propose for the student...
I can't.
We already incorporated your 100 amendments. Okay, and we're gonna take that as a joke, and... Okay. So, thank you to Nick, and welcome, Maxine. Okay, the next item will be student comments. Normally, at work sessions, we provide time for public comment at the end of the work session. I understand, however, that we have a number of students with us this evening who'd like to address the Board. So, we'll depart from our regular practice to allow students to speak at a reasonable hour, since I anticipate this is gonna be a late meeting. So, before we call you up, I'd like to remind you of the expectations around public comment. Board members and the superintendent will not respond to comments or questions during public comments. If you want to follow up from the Board Office, please contact Roseanne Powell, the Board Office Manager. Guidelines for public input emphasize respect and consideration of others. Any complaints about individual employees... Any complaints about individual employees should be directed to the superintendent's office as a personnel matter. If you have additional materials or items you'd like to provide to the board or superintendent, we ask that you give them to Ms. Powell to distribute to us. Requests to make public comments should be made ahead of time by contacting the board office or checking with Ms. Powell prior to the start of the board meeting to see if there are spots available. Once the board meeting has started, we can no longer accept new requests for public comment. Ms. Powell, do we have?
We do, we have three. We have Esther Kazak and Mira Kulkarni.
Okay, before you start, I'd like to explain how this is going to work. You will have two minutes to share your comments. Please begin by stating your name and spelling your last name for the record. During the first minute of your testimony, a green light will appear. When you're halfway through, when you have one minute left, the yellow light will go on. And when your time is up, the red light will come on and a buzzer will sound. And we're going to ask that you end your comments at that point so that we can listen to other speakers. Okay?
Hello, my name is Esther. My last name is Kazak. You spell it K-I-Z-A-K. I am a fifth grader at Kelly Elementary Russian Immersion Program. Today, I'm here to express my opinion about why I think it is not a good idea to blend fourth and fifth grades in one class. First of all, it's already hard enough for us to study two languages at the same time and by blending classes, it will make it even more challenging and confusing. The fifth grade will have to repeat what they already know. The material for fifth grade is harder than material for fourth grade and fourth grade is, will be confused. Secondly, why I think blending the classes together is not a good idea is because participation and being engaged in classrooms is very important for our development. Discussion and group work will be very difficult in a large classroom. Also, due to the fact that the students are of different ages, a lot of students are going to be shy and feel uncomfortable to engage in class activities. Fourth grades are going to avoid asking questions because they don't want to be made fun of by the fifth graders. Lastly, why joining fourth and fifth grades is not in our favor is that it makes our class size very big and teacher will not be able to address our unique language needs. I was very fortunate not to be in a blended classroom and I want the same for my brother, who will be in fifth grade next year and for all the other students that are in this classroom. I'm grateful for the opportunity I was provided to study in a small classroom where I was heard and my questions were answered. I want the same experience for all the students. I want them to also have an opportunity to be in a environment where the teacher does not have to spend more time on classroom management than on time to teach them and make sure they understand and can apply what we're being taught. I am very thankful that I had the opportunity to be in Russian Immersion Program for the past six years. I want the same for my brother and for my little sister who is joining kindergarten next year. Please allow them to experience this program to its fullest extent. Thank you very much for your time.
My name is Miracle Kulkarni, K-U-L-K-A-R-N-I. I'm a graduating senior from Alliance at Meek High School. I'm extremely grateful to have been able to find Meek. I went to Grant in the last three years and it was not a fit for me. It was just too big. So finding Meek was actually one of the best choices I had ever made. I'm graduating with a 3.0 GPA, so I'm very proud of myself. Also, I'd like to thank Superintendent Guadalupe Guerrero for coming and seeing us and talking to us and listening to our needs and our wants. But it seems like I and other students are feeling as if those needs are not being met as of yet. Many of you may know that our school was transferred from an elementary school to a high school with 200-plus growing teenagers, more or less. And we have no library, we have no gym. Our cafeteria is currently an inside gym for rainy days, a cafeteria and an auditorium for all of our assemblies. It's also our testing area, so we take the tests on the stage. I think that most classrooms, most classrooms are shared between two or more teachers. And testing, like I said, is held in the cafeteria. I think that we need space that supports us as growing people and as growing humans and teenagers with a lot of emotions and feelings. And we need that space that supports learning, development, and mental well-being as young adults. So I'm in front of you asking today, will you continue to marginalize our Alliance community as a whole? Or will you stand up and support us? Thank you.
Lastly is Lexi Morris.
Can I talk now? Good evening. My name is Lexi Morris, Morris, M-O-R-R-I-S. And I'm a student at Alliance at Meek. When I came to Meek, I was behind in credits and I struggled in a large high school in another district. I have received so much support at Meek and am now getting ready to graduate next month. It has been very difficult for me and it should not be so hard for anybody to graduate from high school. I have a learning disability and I'm homeless and I'm a parent to a beautiful baby girl. Every morning, I go to my, I go from my friend's house, where I'm staying at now, to Madison High School to drop off my daughter at childcare, then I go to Alliance at Meek. If there had been a childcare center at Meek, I would be spending many fewer hours a day in a cab or a bus going to and from Madison. If we had a gym and showers and dressing rooms, I might have been able to take a PE class instead of having to create a workout program with the counselor to do on my own. One of the words Alliance teachers teach us when we first enroll there is perseverance. And I have persevered, but I know that not all team parents do so. I hope that future students like me could have an easier road to graduation and go to Alliance High School with a childcare center, a gym, real science labs, while keeping all the support we get from the staff here. Thank you.
Okay, thank you all for your input and your cooperation. And I think we're going to, we're going to take a break here. The remainder of the work session is going to take place in the Mazama Room upstairs on the second floor. We'll take a 10-minute recess and then reconvene in the Mazama Room. Thank you.